We will call our meeting to order. It is May 1st, 2024. And the time is 1:30. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Thank you. Happy May Day. Did anybody do the baskets this morning? Darn. I used to too. Okay, first up, we have approval of the agenda as presented. If anybody would like to make a motion.
I make a motion to approve it.
Checking it.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Okay, we'll move right into our consent agenda. I will run through each of the agenda items. If we do have any to pull out or discuss, please let me know. If not, I will look for an approval for that. Our minutes of April 10th, 2024 District Board Meeting. B is renewal of non-provocationary faculty for 2024-25. C is renewal of probationary faculty for 2024-25. D is revised policy 537 Alternative Work. E is repeal policy 4-902 Discrimatory Harassment. F repeal policy 4-1000 Grievance. G new policy 523 Prohibiting Discrimination, Harassment, and Retaliation. H new policy 625 for student travel. Is there any discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Trustee Trustwell. Thanks, Trustee O'Hare. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. As usual, the Board of Trustees encourages general public comment. Provide comments directly related to business and operations. And I do believe Zach has somebody, our speaker today.
Public comment from Mark How, pinch pots, and thank you. So, Mark, welcome up.
Welcome, Mark.
Board and Dr. B, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I told everybody I'd make this brief, and again, it's the end of the semester. It's where AMIC's classes finishing up. For those that got their penny for their thoughts last semester, it's been six months now, and here we are again. I just want to thank the board again for the pleasure that I had serving with you guys and the president and this college. I'm so very proud of you guys, and this institution is overwhelming. And where we're going to go over the next 54 years, only to be told, who knows? With your permission, I'll let you guys set these out at the end of the meeting. And then I guess it's the first come, first served at your discretion. So I'll leave that up to the board.
Thank you, Mark. That's great. I enjoy my little pinch pot from last year, so.
It's an old saying, but if we all had a penny for all our thoughts, our wealth would be four times what it is today. Thank you.
For sure. Thank you. Okay, next we'll move on to excellent at Ames. Shannon McCaslin, Dean of Students.
As our student comes up with a slightly sprained ankle that we believe is going to heal by commencement time. I will say, that's right, we're all cheering for that. I will say good afternoon. And as usual, thank you for the opportunity to introduce you to another of our remarkable students. I've gotten to know Jennifer quite well in the past year. And that's because she's become a leader among leaders on the Campus Activities Programming Team. Jennifer came to Ames as many students do, wondering deep down if she was college material. Spoiler alert, she is, she is. Jennifer has a lot of fan club members in this audience, and I know on Zoom as well, because they've been emailing me. We've had a front row seat to her transformation. She's a member of the English Honor Society, Phi Theta Kappa, National Society for Leadership and Success. On top of that, she's been a contributing member on a committee that I run, the Recovery Steering Team, and has received national recognition when she was chosen to be on the Collegiate Recovery Leadership Academy, which is an academic year-long fellowship program for students who are passionate about the intersection of addiction, mental health and recovery, leadership and advocacy. Pretty cool. So Jennifer is going to transfer onto UNC in the fall to major in psychology with a career goal. Check this out. I think this is probably partially because of Ames. With a career goal of working in higher ed and his desire to facilitate safety and well-being for future college students. That's enough for me. I want you to hear from Ms. Jennifer.
So in 2021, I wanted to get my GED, and I researched and I found Ames. Here I could do it at home, and that was ideal with COVID and a one-and-a-half-year-old running around. I studied during naptime, as it had been 10 years since I'd been in school. I did not get my GED then, but in February of 2022, I took my last test in person. As I walked out of the testing center, they said, "See you in the fall." I was taken aback by these words. I come from a time where GED means a minimum wage job flipping burgers for the rest of your life. They told me I could go to college with a GED, and three days later I applied. I had no idea what I was getting into. I decided to start with the summer semester. A single mom with three children going through an extremely messy divorce in therapy and no idea where my life was going at the age of 28. My first semester, I had Stacy Long, who was an English professor, and I had Stephanie Train, who was an English and Humanities professor. They helped me realize a path for me to take to realize the real passions I have had since I lost my daughter in 2020. I started writing again due to the persistence of both of these women and how strongly they feel about the students they teach. My second semester here, I felt like I was going to drown. I thought I was going to lose myself to my addictions. I was trying everything in my power not to drink and take pills, but there was Stacy Johnson, my interpersonal communications professor, lifting me up while I went through a horrific time with my youngest child, pushing me every day in class, getting me to smile, laugh, and enjoy life the way I should be. Thanks to Stacy's efforts, during my third semester, I was glowing, and I felt like I was there and that I had it. Then I got to know Professor Megan Friesen, and the way she teaches Shakespeare changed my life. As you can tell, writing is a passion of mine, and in this class, I realized that I was writing for all the wrong reasons. Megan helped me transform my writing into what I want to write, not what I believed people wanted me to write about. I met Professor Leslie Morrison during the Ames English Honor Society meetings. I've never had a chance to take one of her classes, but I don't think you need to take one of her classes to learn from her. What I learned is that one can be goofy and professional at the same time. She helped me realize that I can be loving and kind when all I thought I could do was survive. I met Whitney Kelling at the end of my third semester during officer training. Two hours after the training, she reached out and said, "I know you have an incredibly busy life, but I have an amazing opportunity for you." She guided me to the CAP Substance Use and Recovery Initiative's position. The talks I've had with Whitney have been healing to my soul. I never thought I'd get to this point, but because of how uplifting she is, I am able to stand here today. The English language does not have enough words to cover how grateful I am for Janet Chase. She pushed me past the boundaries that needed to be broken for me to open my heart and create lifelong friendships with the people that I work with. The wonderful Alyssa Garcia has opened my eyes to see a different side of who I am. She helped me explore things that most people find unusual. She got me on a plane, which to this date has to be the hardest part of her job that she's ever done. Conquering fears is not easy, but this amazing person helped me, and I'm so excited that I get to work with her again for another year. And we all know how amazing Shannon is. She's been behind me every step of this journey. Being able to laugh and cry with her while learning how to love someone wholeheartedly for who they are, I've been able to connect some of her values to myself, and she's shown me what is possible for my future. I did not have a good life growing up. I was not used to succeeding against life. I was winning. At this point, I was on the dean's list every semester and given an opportunity to work in student life. Still going through the hardest thing I have ever done, I was given this blessing by Ames. I had never been a part of anything so healthy in my life. I'd never met a single soul who was against me bettering myself. I'm graduating with my associate's degree. I never imagined that I would have this type of degree in my life. Not only am I graduating, but I'm a certified peer educator in three honor societies and had the most amazing work experience and so many life-changing experiences. I have found that Ames is my life. I want to work here someday, helping students like I was helped through the hard, the messy, the happy, the incredible moments. I want them to all know that they are not alone, because this is the first time in my life that I have not been alone. So what does Ames mean to me? Everything. Ames is my life, and I will never, I will forever be grateful for every person here because they pushed me to do what I was always told was impossible. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. You have a little something. Thank you, and congratulations. You're inspiration. Thank you for sharing. So powerful. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Okay, next up, we have our representatives to the board, our Student Government Association, Jared. Jared Toledo.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the board, cabinet members, Chair Shock, Dr. Bornstein. Really appreciate being able to share this time with you. Student life, we've been preparing for the end of the semester. It's really hard to believe commencement's around the corner, and this time I'm going to be in it. So, super exciting. We've been all wrapping up our projects, and we've just had a very busy month, just not only with the projects, but commencement. But speaking of being busy, CAP, they've hosted over 100 events for students this year, and SGA has hosted monthly SGA Town Halls on all of the campuses in addition to hosting tabling events throughout the different campuses just to kind of get our face out there and promote SGA and CAP. The Campus Activities Board in Artie's Pantry, they hosted the Period Product Period Product Packing Party in April. That was a huge success with over 40,000 products packed under three hours. This event really showcased how just all the students here at Ames are all in. Again, in honor of Stress Awareness Month, CAP also hosted various therapeutic events where students could have a plant, a planner, and they can also paint their planner at the events. What was really cool was being in class and seeing the planners that these students had. CAP also hosted the Community Volunteer Drive, where various community nonprofits shared volunteer opportunities with students. Again, just while walking through the student commons to class, I stopped at a couple tables myself, but it was a packed house. So it was pretty cool to see. Another big event that we had was the, or we had in the student commons, was the 18 Ingredients of Fascism. Think it's a very important event to have. This presentation was by Dr. Booker as part of the Holocaust Memorial Observances of Greeley in Northern Colorado. There was a strong attendance. We had 50 people. We had students and community members. And then one thing we're super excited for is our SGA VP of CESE, Danielle Irwin. She's going to be passing her role on as an ARC leader into the incoming students. She has initiated this program, and it's been completely student-led from the get-go. Many students have expressed their appreciation. I've been in there. I've seen the students come in. It's super cool to have a space for these students. In addition, I'm going to be speaking at the Veterans and Military Affiliated Commencement Breakfast. This is close to my heart because I'm a veteran myself. It's really a privilege to be able to speak to the other veterans here at Ames. On that note, I do want to give a shout out to John DeChant just for his incredible support that he has for veterans here. He's helped me through numerous challenges that I've had through VA paperwork, but he's always been there to help us. But as I wrap up my last report for the board, I'd like to invite the 2023 and 2024 outgoing SGA and CAP teams to stand. Thank you all very much, and to my team, I'm super proud of all you, and I really thank for all of the knowledge that I've learned from each and every one of you. There's something that I've learned from everybody here, so thank you. But on that note, I want to thank everybody here as well for not only giving me the opportunity to do something I never thought I'd do in my life, but prove to my son that there's another way of life than just going into construction and ruining your body. So. But on that note, does anybody have any questions?
I don't think so. On behalf of the board, thank you so much. You have done a fantastic job this year. We really appreciate you, your time, your thought, and the way you always present. So, thank you, and good luck.
Thank you all.
We're going to take a quick pause as we move the podium over just a little bit. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Julia Weingart with Ames Faculty Association.
Chair Shock, members of the board, cabinet members, and Dr. Bornstein, colleagues and guests, good afternoon. It's hard to believe that this semester has just gone by like a weekend, and that's what it feels like. It sure does. Well, this is a very exciting time. I always, just I look forward to giving these presentations on behalf of AFA. You're always such a wonderful audience and always so appreciative. So I just want to tell you all, thank you so much for being so kind and so gracious. Today, we're going to not only be mentioning some of the faculty highlights, but drumroll, drumroll, we get to announce our Faculty of the Year, Staff of the Year, and Part-Time Faculty of the Year. So if you'll allow me just a couple minutes to get through the first faculty accomplishments, we'll spend a little bit of time looking at all the wonderful comments that were made about our winners. All right, so we're going to begin with our Communication, Media, and Graphic Design and Rich Media professors, Brian Dunning and instructor Eric Taylor. And their showcase right now is allowing students to share their work and be recognized for their effort in film and animation projects. And I remember when I was at Colorado State University, and the first time a professor said, "Julia, we're going to show your work to other students." I just, I cannot tell you the feeling of exuberation, so I know how these students must feel. It's a pretty wonderful thing. Once again, English professors Stacy Johnson, Megan Friesen, and Leslie Morrison attended a wonderful National Honor Society Conference in St. Louis, Missouri. Now, what I thought was so wonderful about this is there are two students were actually selected for a roundtable presentation on the impact of literature in their lives, and we also had quite a few winners for some prizes as well, which was really wonderful. Now, moving on here to Anthropology Adjunct Jill Scott. She attended the 93rd Annual Meeting of the American Association of Biological Anthropologists in March of this year in Los Angeles, California. Part-Time Health and Physical Education Substitute Mark Leach has a really interesting project to deal with technological addictions. What he is doing is he's having parents join him in kind of rotating schools in our Well District, and they're going to be playing games and having community and family time to bring people together to help kind of fight the technological addiction that so many of our young people experience. On a final note, Part-Time World Language instructor Lucille Lund created an OER for her French classes. And what's so exciting about this is that her French I and II students are going to be able to have a free class due to the OER grant, and hopefully this will be a great motivating factor for more students to learn French. Parlez-vous français? That's about it. All right, let's move on now to the main course here, where we're going to be looking at this beautiful, incredible woman right here, Alex Carlson Tucker. All right, she is our Staff of the Year. So here are some wonderful things that were said about Alex. Let me get my glasses on so I don't mess up anything for Alex. Alex strives to develop. Wait, I can take this off and talk. Now we're talking. Okay, so Alex strives to develop, discover, and facilitate so many good things, such as honoring the dedication and experience of long-term instructors while inviting new instructors into the conversation as significant contributors. Also, she has test-driven technology and has facilitated a wide range of important conversations. Now, Alex worked two jobs while in the FTLC, navigated by the loss of one of a team member of three. Can you imagine doing the work of two or three people? Well, Alex did. In fact, doing work for two staff members had her going way beyond and above her role. In fact, everything that Alex does comes from a place of respect, thoughtfulness, civility, consideration, and I would also add in a little bit of curiosity and humor as well. Furthermore, Alex is a great listener as she knows how to talk to you to solve your issue, and I know that we can all use someone like that in our lives. The guidance she gives is workable, and her abilities to engage in meaningful conversations, well, they're just downright outstanding. Alex knows how to empower others in her area of development. Although there were more wonderful things said about Alex, I wanted to highlight those for everybody. Now, let's move on to our Full-Time Faculty of the Year, and that is Mihha Daruka. All right, now, this was a nomination by Brian Seaman. So Mihha's dedication can be seen in the service and professional development opportunities that Mihha participates in. You see, Mihha is over in a satellite campus in Fort Lupton, yet she makes time and effort to often come over to our campus for face-to-face meetings when she doesn't really have to do that. All right, that's a going over and beyond, if you ask me. Now, despite teaching from this satellite campus and residing far from our main campus, Mihha routinely attends professional development opportunities via remote modalities and once again, often commutes to campus for face-to-face meetings. Time spent in such gatherings, not to mention time spent traveling, shows that Mihha holds her aims, her classes, and her students to a high standard. In fact, let me share one more example with you all. Starting last fall, Mihha and Brian Seaman worked together on a project to bring about multiple improvements to our Fort Lupton campus. Throughout this process, Mihha put in several hours of her own time to create letters, surveys, and other documents in order to hear out the part-time faculty, because oftentimes, part-time faculty don't really feel included or a part of our campus, and she's making sure that they do so. Finally, Mihha has also framed much of the discussion on not only campus improvements, but how these improvements will better serve the students. We see where her priorities are. No wonder she won the award. Her aim is twofold, her colleagues and her students. The balance of attention that she shows demonstrates her dedication to Ames. Finally, our Part-Time Faculty of the Year, Carly Carpenter. Now, I actually had never heard of Carly, and I actually need to meet her in person to congratulate her on this amazing award. Carly is an adjunct faculty instructor who teaches in the Science Department, and she spends numerous hours every week doing about every single thing that FTLC has to offer. Carly even picks up classes when the department is struggling and needs another outstanding professor to come in and lead the team. In the classroom, Carly is very enthusiastic, and she in fact has students following her from course to course to make sure that she's going to be their professor. This attests to the caliber of her courses and the learning experience that she offers to her students. Carly is a regular attendee, once again, of these FTLC events, and she's always looking about learning more, sharing more, and fostering those connections that are so incredibly important. On a final note, Carly works regularly with the instructional coach and seeks to enhance and improve her courses by not only working on her craft, but working on her. Thus ends our presentation for May 1st, 2024 BOT. I wish you all a fantastic rest of your day, a wonderful rest of the spring, and do we have any questions for me?
I don't think so. Thanks for all your energy, Julia.
Opportunity. Appreciate it so much.
Okay, next up, we have Ames Staff Association, Ross Perkins.
Well, happy Wednesday, everybody. I hope everybody's having a great day on this beautiful spring day. A little breezy, but I'll take it. Once again, it's an honor to be up here to represent all the Ames staff and to talk about our accomplishments. As with Jared, this is, this will be my last meeting and my last presentation, so I'll give you a minute, let that soak in. You can deal with your feelings, work through those. So, a couple of things, just to update. One of the things that we did towards the end of the year, we teamed up with the Ames Wellness Team and had Massage Day throughout all the campuses. So I hope everybody got an opportunity to loosen that tension up a little bit. I think we had on all the campuses, at different days, different places and stuff. So from what I heard from Rachel Walsh is that that was pretty successful. So I haven't seen the final numbers yet. The other big thing that is going on is, starting this afternoon, we'll have our elections for the new ASA positions that are open. So we'll have those going for the next couple of days, and then we'll have those final results probably by Monday sometime. So I'm pretty excited about that. There's a lot of good people that are stepping up and things. So with that, as I, you know, as I part the podium for the last time here, I just want to give a couple of thanks to a few folks out there. First, to my team, to the ASA Leadership Team, Megan Blazer, Chris Gomez, Meg Murphy, Julia Chilcot, Natalia Dugado, Nan Prince, Ally Limo, and Erin Mishashi. I could not do my job without them. They have been instrumental in the success in the last two years that ASA has, that we've done. All the things we've organized, the planning, meetings, getting voice from the staff. Without them and their work, I would never have been able to do that. So I want to make sure that they are recognized for their hard work, and a lot of them are coming back next year to be a part of ASA, so that's awesome. The other person I want to give a shout out to is Dee Schultz over there. Dee, can you let people know who you are? I don't know if they do. Dee is our cabinet representative, and she has been amazing these last two years, working with her and really charting where ASA is going. She's been honest with us about our ambitions and making sure that we're directing our energy in the right direction. And, you know, the work that we're doing now on our policy and charter and procedures for ASA, she has been very insightful in that process, and so she's working with us on that. And I'm super excited about the next step that we'll take. And finally, all the staff here at Ames. Without them, there is no ASA. They're the ones who make this happen. And I thought about this as I come up. Usually I have a lot more prepared, so I'm kind of winging this a little bit, but I was thinking a little bit about the accomplishment. What's my biggest one accomplishment that I think ASA has done in the last two years since I've been in this position? And I think one of the biggest ones is, you know, when I first started to attend ASA meetings, it was a handful of people, the same people every month. You know, maybe 10, maybe 12, maybe 15 people, depending on what's happening and stuff like that. This past year, we've averaged about 45 to 50 staff in our meetings and stuff like that. And I feel like that is one And I feel like that is one of the biggest accomplishments because now staff are actually starting to be involved in shared governance as part of the ASA, and that's one of the things I'm very proud about. Um, so it's an honor to serve in this position for the last two years, and I am sad that I won't be able to stand up here and, uh, give these reports of what staff are doing. But, uh, the next person will be, uh, will be able to represent us, and I'm, as the outgoing president, I will still be there to support them uh, and to provide them with guidance and wisdom-ish, uh, if they need it and things like that. Uh, with that, I say thank you, and I want to thank the board, uh, and Dr. B for, you know, uh, supporting ASA, and we look forward to our next journey next year. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Any questions? No, I just thank you for your leadership and, um, always being thoughtful with your comments and, uh, keeping us informed, so we wish you well.
Thank you very much. I'm not going anywhere, but thank you very much.
Yeah, I know, off of this one. Um, and then I would just, um, a round of, another round of applause for Jared and Ross for their work. Great, thank you. Um, first action item up is seven A. It's fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five Faculty Consultation Agreement. Chuck Jensen, our Vice President of Administrative Services. Thanks, Chuck.
Chair Shock, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein, um, pleased to welcome Brooke Elsie, our Professor of Music, who is on our Faculty Consultation Team to, uh, co-present this action item to the board, so, uh, welcome. Members of the board, you have before you action item seven A. This is the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five Consultation Agreement. And per Policy 210, uh, in accordance, uh, consultations are held between representatives from the Ames Faculty Association, AFA, and college administration to address matters related to specific conditions of employment. And, and for our new board members, I, I wanted to just briefly read the policy. It's a very short policy, but it's very well-written because we wrote it a few years ago. We wrote it a few years ago. Policy 210. The Faculty and Administration Consultation Team is recognized by the Board of Trustees in order to establish and maintain a process for the promotion of a cooperative relationship using interest-based strategies to discuss and reach an agreement on matters related to specific conditions of employment for full-time faculty. This committee is comprised of four administrators, uh, myself, Dr. Ailer, Dean Anderson, and Dean Reichel, and four faculty, uh, Jeff Klein, Professor of Welving, uh, Brooke, uh, Professor of Music, John Mangan, Professor of Building Construction, and Leslie Morrison, Associate Professor of English. So included in this year's agreement are items related to salary increases and education and work experience increment adjustments, medical premiums paid by the college, and contract days for the twenty-four, twenty-five academic year. Faculty Consultation will continue an internal review and discussion of survey data utilizing multiple data sources with the goal to retain and attract at a national level, and will review salary placement options to address current hard-to-fill positions. So that's, uh, as I've said in the past, since I've been here, I've been co-chair, um, named in the policy as co-chair, so I'm co-chair for life. Uh, in my position, that this has been one of the most enjoyable committees that I've worked on in my higher ed career. I mean, it's a very collaborative approach of talking with faculty, understanding working conditions, and having good dialogue between the administration and our faculty leadership. So with that, I'd like to pass the mic over to, to Brooke for a few comments from the faculty side of consultation. Brooke?
Good afternoon, Dr. B, members of the board, Chair Shock. Thank you for having me this afternoon. As Chuck said, uh, my name is Brooke Elsie. I have been a professor of music here since two thousand and seven at this point. I love Ames as much today as I did the first day I started, uh, and it's been a wonderful opportunity being able to serve on the Faculty Consultation Team. So I have been on Faculty Consultation for about three years, and as Chuck said, the other three members, Jeff Klein, Dr. Leslie Morrison, and John Mangan, so the four of us make up the faculty part of Faculty Consultation. Jeff Klein has been our co-chair for a very long time and has put in tireless amounts of work for this. I just wanted to say thank you to him from all of us faculty members for all of the work, decade, over a decade worth of work this man has done. So I wanted to say thank you for that. Um, but basically what happens is us four faculty members meet about once a week, and we meet with our constituents in AFA. We try to see if there's any issues going on, listening, kind of seeing how working conditions are going for everyone. Then we meet and we talk about the issues and brainstorm, try to find solutions, take it back to the full team of eight of us, and then we all participate in interest-based negotiations. It has been a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. The eight of us work very, very well together, very wonderful, open communication with all of us, innovative solutions, a lot of intellect in that room, um, all sorts of wonderful ideas for faculty members, just trying to make sure that all full-time faculty members have decent working conditions, and should they have any questions, we're there to help. Um, that being said, faculty did vote and approve the agreement moving forward for the next calendar year. And I also just wanted to express my gratitude to all of you. Thank you so much for supporting Faculty Consultation. This is a very, very valuable committee on campus. This has been around for many, many years. It's a way for us to work with faculty, high-level administration. We work with Dee Schultz a lot in HR. So it's a very open and communicative type of committee, uh, and we meet almost every single week for every single calendar year. So, um, lots of meetings, lots of really great activities, and, and it's just been wonderful to be a part of it, so thank you. I do find Faculty Consultation to be incredibly valuable to our institution, and we just really wanted to thank you for that as well. So thank you. I believe Chuck and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board? Not appear to be any questions.
One last comment, based on the administrative recommendation is a do-pass on this from the board, so with that, um, I'll turn it back to, to the chair.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, having no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to approve, um, Agenda Action Item 7A.
I will make a motion to approve Action Item 7A, uh, the Consultation Agreement.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Okay, I just have it. We'll move into Action Item 7B, which is fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five Budget Approval with Chuck Jensen.
Thank you, Chair Shock. Members of the board, Dr. Bornstein, you have before you Action Item 7B, the Fiscal Year Twenty-four, Twenty-five Budget. Uh, each year at the May meeting, the Board of Trustees is, brews the budget for the next year. The proposed fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget is presented. Uh, there have been no changes in the numbers presented from the April, uh, work session we had down in Fort Lepton. So you have before you the four funds with a total of two hundred and four million as an overall budget for the college, and the administrative recommendation is, uh, for the approval of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Chair Shock.
It's not appear to be, so we'll take a motion to approve. I approve the budget as presented. Thank you, Trustee Wendell. Second. Thank you, Trustee Trustwell. All those in favor say aye. Okay, I just have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, members of the board. Chair Shock, members of the board, President Bornstein, have before you Action Item 7C. It is the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five accompanying appropriation that goes along with the budget, and according to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-two dash forty-four dash one oh three, the Board of Trustees shall approve an appropriation for each fiscal year. Again, that appropriation is for two hundred and four million, three hundred and ninety thousand. And the academic or the administrative recommendation is for the board to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five appropriation. Chair Shock.
Any questions for Chuck on the appropriation? Not appear that way. If not, could I have a motion to approve? Item 7C.
So, um, approve Action Item 7C.
Thank you, Trustee Wendell. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Trustee Trustwell. All those in favor say aye. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board.
Okay, next up is Action Item 7D, the Sunset Advanced Energy, Advanced Emergency Medical Technician, the AEMT, certificate with Dr. David Ailer, Vice President of Academic Affairs.
Thank you, Chair Shock, Board of Trustees, Dr. Bornstein, and Cabinet and guests. Uh, we're requesting to sunset the Advanced EMS Certificate. This certificate is no longer recognized in the industry in Colorado. Over the past five years, we've observed diminished employment value associated with holding the Advanced EMT Certificate. Many departments have restricted or disallowed individuals with this certificate from practicing the skills at enterprises. This trend underscores the declining relevance of the certificate within the current professional landscape. Furthermore, it's worth noting that Ames has not enrolled students in the Advanced EMS Certificate for over three years. And students and departments request that their students, uh, take other certificates that Ames does offer. So we believe that streamlining our offerings to align with industry demand is crucial for maintaining the quality and relevance of the program, and we recommend archiving this certificate.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, if I could have a motion to approve the Sunset of Advanced, the AEMT Certificate?
I move to approve the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Trustwell. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Trustee O'Hare. All those in favor say aye. Okay, I just have that. Thank you, Dr. Ailer. Next up, we have Action Item 7E, Emeritus Status Request for Jan Stapleton. Again, Dr. David Ailer.
Thank you. Um, we're recommending approval of Emeritus Status for Jan Stapleton. Jan has, uh, she, she was recommended by Ray Brown, the Chair of Mathematics, and, uh, Scott Reichel, the Dean of Arts and Sciences. So Jan taught at Ames for more than twenty years, and during that time, she's taught a variety of classes and played a key role in developing future elementary teachers of mathematics. Teacher quality is often cited as having the largest impact on student success in K-12. Jan sets high standards for herself and for students who are going on to teach mathematics. Being able to do math is different than being able to teach math. With a wide variety of manipulatives she's obtained over the years, her students have learned not only to do math, but to teach math. The foundation math skills which are taught in elementary school are the basis for all mathematical concepts which come later. Without good elementary teachers to provide that foundation and strong instructors like Jan to guide those teachers, math education suffers. So she has a very high level of instruction. She has given outstanding contributions to the college. She's been an effective, caring leader and is an, has been an exceptional department chair. She was equally adept at handling difficult situations and celebrating success, and we fully support her nomination for Emeritus Faculty.
Any questions or comments by the board? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Emeritus Status Request for Jan Stapleton.
I would make motion to approve Action Item 7E, the Emeritus Status of Jan Stapleton.
Thank you, Trustee O'Hare. Is there a second motion? Thank you, Trustee Wendell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I just have it. Okay. Next up, we have the Emeritus Status Request for Tracy Warner, again with Dr. Ailer.
Thank you. Uh, the recommendation is to approve Emeritus Status for Tracy Warner. Excuse me while I turn a page here. Tracy has consistently distinguished herself by her integrity and service to Ames. She served as the Department Chair of the Rad Tech Department for fourteen years, from two thousand and five to two thousand and nineteen. She oversaw the growth and success of the program through many changes, including two moves, first from Ed Beatty Hall into the newly erected Allied Health and Sciences Building, and again, when the program was redesigned and moved from the second floor to the basement in AHS. She oversaw the planning and design of our X-ray labs, moving away from film imaging and outdated technology to the amazing digital lab spaces we currently have. She's continued to be a valuable asset to our program, an amazing mentor to incoming chairs who followed in her footsteps. Her insight and knowledge of the college and our program's history and practices has been invaluable. Tracy's pleasant and well-liked by all who interact with her, including peers and students. She's always willing to be of service and helpful whenever she is able. She is an optimum choice for receiving Emeritus Status.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve Emeritus Status for Tracy Warner.
I move to approve the action item, Action Item Number Seven F.
Great. Thank you, Trustee Trustwell. Is there a second? A second, Beth? Thank you, Trustee Wendell. All those in favor say aye. I just have it. Thank you. Next up, we have Jerry Harvey, who will go through our events calendar and upcoming work session agenda items.
Jerry?
Thank you, Chair Shock. Uh, you'll see in your packet, uh, we'll start with some upcoming events. Um, you'll notice there are quite a few of them because Celebration Week is next week. I'm not going to go through all the events, but I will highlight a couple of them that we don't have attendees at so far. Uh, so draw your attention to May eighth, the Med Prep Penning Ceremony, um, the Firefighter Academy graduation and the Police Academy graduations on May eleventh. Um, if you are able to attend, uh, any of those, please let me know ahead of the event so I can let the organizers know. Uh, we'd love to have at least one trustee at each event. Uh, speaking of, um, events, commencement, of course, is next week. Uh, you'll notice in front of you, there's a VIP, um, parking space. Please bring that with you, uh, when you come to park. There's a designated parking spot, uh, for folks, and so you'll need that to be able to get in, so don't lose that. But if you do, let me know, and I can, uh, get you another copy. And next is the annual calendar of events. Uh, as has been mentioned already, uh, this is the last meeting, uh, until August. Uh, so you'll see that there reflected on your calendar. Uh, however, we do have a June Board Retreat, uh, which leads me to Item Eight B, uh, if Chair Shock will let me skip ahead. There will be a Board Retreat, and in front of you, we have a draft agenda just for you guys to have, uh, kind of take a look at what the day will look like, and I wanted to go through that, a few items on that with you. Uh, just as a, an FYI to everyone, this was, uh, put together in collaboration with, uh, the facilitator, Cindy Miles, Dr. Cindy Miles. Uh, Chair Shock and Dr. Bornstein worked together, uh, to put this together. Uh, June Retreat is going to be June, uh, sorry, Board Retreat is going to be on June twelfth, nine AM to five PM. You'll note there, uh, some light snacks from eight thirty to nine, so you're welcome to show up in that half-hour, uh, chunk there for some snacks, and then, um, the retreat will start promptly at nine AM, so please be there by nine. Uh, it'll be a packed day. Um, this is, uh, because it's the June Retreat, there's the annual time for evaluations, so I wanted to kind of highlight that for folks as well, especially for our new trustees. Um, the evaluations are done on a two-year rotating basis, so, uh, the board self-evaluation is this year, and Dr. Bornstein's informal evaluation is this year. Next year, it'll be flipped, and that's how the rotation works. Um, part of that evaluation process is to complete the self-evaluations, uh, by May the twelfth at eleven fifty-nine PM, so please remember to do that. I'll send out some reminders, uh, between now and then to remind you to complete those for ACCT. And then, uh, you'll notice there also one of the items is Board Strengths. Um, so I sent out the link to complete your StrengthsFinder, uh, surveys ahead of the retreat as well, if you could please complete those, um, and then forward me, uh, a copy of your top five strengths that it generates, so please send those along to me as well. Any questions from the board? Oh, perfect. All right, thank you. I'll get you down to that.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Item eight C is correspondence. We did receive a piece of correspondence from the Greeley Weld Habitat for Humanity. Thank Ames for being a sponsor for their thirty-sixth anniversary Building Impact Breakfast and for being a great long-term partner within the community. And the letter also highlights the upcoming habitat projects and events. So nice acknowledgement and thank you for the partnership. Next up, number nine, we have our CEO President's Report with Dr. Leah Bornstein.
Thank you, Chair Shock. Before we get into some of the reports, in your packet, there are highlights from each division that they put together about what are some of the exciting things that have been going on. If you have any questions, now would be the time that we can entertain those, and I would ask the particular cabinet member to respond if you have any questions on the President's Report highlights. Okay, hearing none. I would like to first introduce Terry Anderson, who's the Dean of Allied Health and Wellness and the co-chair of Ames Administrative Group. They would like to, Ames Administrative Group would like to update the board on the first year of this association and group, actually, it's a group. So without further ado, Terry Anderson.
Good afternoon, Chair Shock, Board Members. Dr. B, glad to be with you today to give you a quick update. If you remember, we came to you all back at the December meeting to give you kind of a brief overview of the beginning of this group. It is something that came out of the College Climate Survey as really a way to continue to advance our leadership at the college. And so back in the summer, this past summer, Dr. Bornstein charged this group of administrators based on the classification of administrator to really do three main focus. One was setting the tone and direction of the institutional culture. Two is lead and grow together as leaders at the institution. And three is establish greater opportunities for cross-departmental individual, divisional collaboration and collegiality. And so from there, we took the charge and began meeting and working. We got our charter established in August and really began to figure out our meeting cadence for the rest of the year. We had two components that we had in each meeting this year. One was a learning agenda item. And the second one was looking at the college's values. And so the learning agenda item topic this year was leadership norms and really trying to establish those as administrators and leaders of the institution. And so that began by bringing in a consultant to help us really establish some baselines and understand who we are as leaders and also what the college saw us as, as leaders. And so it was one full day with the AAG Group, with the consultant, to really do, to do some examining on how we felt we were doing as leaders. And then there was three days of focus groups with about fifty different employees across the institution to provide feedback on how we felt we were doing as leaders. After all that happened, we compiled some data and really figured out what were some really key things that began and continuously pinged about leadership and gave us some focus on how we wanted to move forward. And so four main things came out of that. One was clarity of roles as an administrator. One was accountability as an administrator. The third was communication as a communicator, and the fourth was providing feedback. And so, once we had those main focus established, we took some time and a couple of months, broke into some smaller working groups to really begin to figure out what is the next step for us to move forward as administrators with those particular areas of focus. And really try to figure out how can we establish some leadership norms that we were all going to agree to moving forward as leaders in those particular areas. So the first one with clarity of roles, that started with really defining what it meant to be an administrator at Ames. And through that process, some things came out of really, one, having that role defined and actually kind of institutionalizing it and adding some language into PDQs and job descriptions to really codify that. And also figuring out some interview questions that any administrator coming to the, to him in Ames would also be asked. And so from very beginning, if you had an interest in being an administrator at Ames, you would see on the job posting what it means to be an administrator. When you came in, if you got to the interview phase, you would have questions that would ask to help us really choose administrators and leaders that fit into the direction and the culture that we're trying to establish. The next focus that we had was accountability, and that was really about two components. Helping us as the administrators group establish some accountability with one another on meeting these leadership norms that we're agreeing upon. And then just also the overall idea of being an administrator, holding one another accountable. And so one of the tangible outcomes that we are looking at is establishing some accountability communities amongst the administrators. And what that will look like is three or four will be grouped up for either the duration of a semester or potentially a year long and just have periodic meetings once or twice a month to get together and talk through, hey, how are you doing as an administrator? Here's some struggles I'm having. Here's some strategies that I'm imploring. So we can really, one, have that accountability piece, but also if we get back to that original, one of the original charge items is continue to build that collaboration and collegiality between administrators. And so that's what we're moving forward on in that area. The next area of focus was communication. And we all know that in any organization, that is an area of opportunity. And so we really wanted to look and see how we can, as administrators, understand how the institution wants to be communicated to. What is the most effective way for us to communicate to them in a more consistent way? And so one thing we did is we brought in a consultant just this past month to meet with the AAG Group, along with another thirty or so leaders from the institution. And they gave us a professional development training about how to communicate effectively, so people will listen. And so really trying to figure out different basic norms that we can all use. And so if a message needs to be communicated and it's coming from me, that same message will be effectively communicated if it's coming from a different administrator as well. And then the final area of focus we've looked at for the year is feedback. And that really came in two different forms. One, looking at how just in general feedback is provided to the institution, and then how feedback can be communicated to administrators. And so one thing we're looking at is doing an audit of all the different types of feedback loops we have at the institution and figuring out, are they effective? Are they accessible? And are they something that is helping us continue to move forward? And if they are, great, we will continue with them. And if they're not, then it's an opportunity for us to stop using it and focus on the ones that are effective for us as an institution. And so we're continuing to move forward with kind of solidifying those norms, agreeing to those norms as we move into kind of year two. And then the second piece of each meeting, what we did is we examined one of our college values. And I thought these were some very valuable discussions that we had. We really wanted to take some time to really have some organized discussions to figure out how, as leaders, what are opportunities for us to continue to live out those values? We know we have them. We know that they're important. We know that we want to operate within those values on a daily basis. But what are some real practical, tangible ways that we can do that for the institution and allow different mechanisms for everyone at the institution to do that as well? And so those were some really deep and rich conversations. And one of the greatest things I can personally say from those meetings is I think that this group has grown significantly together over the last nine or so months. Because some of those are some tough conversations we have. We said we want to build trust. We want to be honest. That's the only way that we're going to be able to positively transform and move our culture is to just be honest and transparent and vulnerable in some situations. And the conversation that we were having in September compared to the conversations we were having in March were very different. They were very much more mature, very much at a deeper level. And so the growth of that, that group in that short, better time makes me excited to be able to meet that charge that the President has for us to really positively move the culture here at Ames. So it's been a busy year. It's been a fun year. We're excited to continue to do the work that we're doing. And I would take any questions you all have.
Any questions, comments?
I have a quick comment. I want to say thank you for all the hard work. Sounds like you've already come a long way. And just real quick, I'm excited to see what happens at the end of next year. So congratulations on doing some good work.
I'd also echo, we appreciate your efforts. One of my questions would be, you've established all these new norms, and how are you going to evaluate how successful you've been as we move forward?
Yeah, so we'll establish a cadence on engaging with the college to get that feedback. One of the biggest things I think we realize is going to be, continue to be important is to be very active listeners to the college and the pulse of the college on how they're feeling, we're doing as leaders, how they're feeling, we're doing on positive, moving the culture forward. So we have some surveys just in general that the college does, and we'll look and evaluate that data as a group. But similar to some of the consultants we brought in to do some focus groups to help us understand, we'll establish a cadence to bring them back and kind of, this year was the baselining. We'll bring them back to do that same type of evaluation and really see how we are able to move the needle if we are on a lot of those, those leadership wants and desires from the institution.
Thank you. I just want to thank Zach McFarlane and Terry Anderson, both who have been co-chairing this this year. And you know, the first year of establishing any significant body, it's imperative to set the expectations appropriately, set the tone appropriately to really craft that baseline for success and for positive movement forward. And these two folks have done an outstanding job doing just that. So I want to thank you, Terry and Zach, 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 for a fantastic job in this. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Next, this is the time of year that we present to the board the Marketing Communications Annual Report. So Zach McFarlane, who's the Chief Marketing and Communications Officer, will walk us through some PowerPoint slides.
Some PowerPoint slides. That is a good segue. Chair Shock, members of the board, Dr. B. I know I'm pretty close to the end of the last meeting before August. So for the audience, I dropped a twenty-five PowerPoint slide presentation on you. That's just for the fans. MarCom update, this is our time to do an annual review, and I am good, Chair Shock runs a very efficient show, so I'm going to do a good job of getting through these things. It's the time of year where we look back at what Marketing, Communications, and Events has done and just showed you. So I'm going to dive right in. This is the team, Marketing, Communications, and Events make up the three pillars of this group. Marketing is really focused on prospective students. We use the website to really connect with them. Communications, that's Public Relations. The metrics there would be awareness and perception of the college. And then Events, I'm going to show you a lot of really cool slides on Events and how that team has grown. And then in this team as well, we have our brand team, and they really support all three of those groups in making sure that everything we do is on brand and saying exactly what we want to say and representing that brand well throughout a lot of significant efforts. The first group we'll highlight here is Marketing. And really with Marketing, I want to just show you the website. The website continues to be one of the most powerful tools we have to connect to a variety of audiences, particularly prospective students. And as you'll see, yearly, we end up with one point six million sessions on the website. By Google standards, that is a high-traffic website. We have over ten thousand pages on our website that are managed. When we manage the site, that's everything from backend security to the code, to content, working with college-wide content authors. We have a lot of them who we work with to make sure that that content is updated, relevant, interesting, that it's driving action. And I'll show you a couple of slides on that, too. Five point three million page views on that site, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand total users. So obviously, the users are coming back and viewing the site multiple times and getting to the places they need to go. Website doesn't really mean anything unless it's driving action, right? That's our primary focus to say, hey, we want you to come to the site, and we want you to do some of the stuff that we, you know, know leads down the road to becoming a student. So we're tracking all of this. The team does a really good job. What you see different this year than maybe some previous years past is some year-over-year metrics. We've established good baselines, and now we're starting to compare and see where we're at. Everything from applying now clicks to request for information and filling out forms. We are driving quite a bit of action, ninety-nine thousand total actions, which is up, you know, twenty-five percent from the previous year. How do we get them there? One of the primary ways we get them there is through Google Ads. We're also on Bing Yahoo. Google really drives this industry. So we adhere to the Google standards, track on our Google standards, and then we know that being in Yahoo is following that. With Google, we're looking at six million impressions, two hundred and four thousand clicks, and twenty-one thousand conversions. You're probably asking yourself, why would the marketing guy be showing you a metric that's negative forty-five percent on impressions? I should be showing you inflated numbers. I would only show that to you because it's actually really good and speaks to a lot of work on the digital marketing team. What you'll notice here in impressions is that we do have a decrease in impressions, but you'll also notice an increase in clicks and conversions. Our digital marketing team is diligent in making sure that we're showing our content, our advertising to the right people. So we're not worried about vanity metrics like impressions. We want to serve ads to the people that need to see them. And then we want to drive action off of those ads. So you see a really good mix there. You can visually see here, our teams work in getting these ads to the right people, which lessens your impressions, and then making sure that they're taking the appropriate action, because you'll see that increase in the clicks and conversions. We've worked really hard. This is in cooperation with SACE and Recruitment Team on looking at a lot of program-specific marketing. We had a lot of opportunity for growth here over the years in really ensuring that really, when somebody gets ads for every academic program that we have programs, that they're showing ads so that we can actually recruit for them. And then two, that once they click that request for information button, and you'll see an example of an email there in the larger, that tablet screen, that they're receiving an email content that's personalized for that academic program. So the second someone clicks Request Information and fills those fields out, they're getting an email served to them that says thank you first, and then regular content a couple of times that's specific to that program. And we now have done that for every academic program that has a button click on it, and that was work over the last year. And that was alongside the recruitment team, which was a good project. This is where I am showing you inflated numbers, true to my marketing self. This is a new thing for the year, so really, last year, these numbers are a little skewed as we continue to have better year-over-year data. This is pretty new, so you see these kind of two hundred and fifty-six percent. That won't be the case next year. They'll be a little lower. But we do track that alongside industry standards for open rates and what people should be doing, and all things are good there. This is another example of the type of work that the marketing team engages in that a lot of people don't get to see. And that's the creation of certain, like, subdomains like this. This is safety.ams. aims. uh people don't get to see, and that's the creation of certain um like subdomains like this. This is safety dot aims dot edu. What we saw uh was that in during COVID, we noticed that uh we were sending people to get information, you know, that was very important and updated very regularly, but we were sending them to the main website, which is pretty convoluted and really not specifically targeted for them, right? Perspective students are the primary audience for the main website, so they're entering into needing to get information and going into an experience not specifically tailored for that. So we just created and launched safety dot aims dot edu, um which is a much more streamlined uh uh subdomain website uh for us to be able to put, and you'll see notifications on emergencies, any safety, any ongoing issues. Uh we have campus status alerts, um and we can really uh start to customize that content and streamline it so that people can uh read that much more efficiently, especially um if we're needing to communicate something rapidly and quickly. Um this is live. We will probably start using it here in the next two to three weeks and and incorporating that alongside the Safety and Security Team, who is also instrumental in helping us get this launched and ready to go. Um digital advertising is important. That's where, you know, the vast majority of people, including ourselves nowadays, find a lot of information. But that's not to say that we focus exclusively on digital advertising. Uh in fact, we actually, we just did a brand audit. At some point, I'll present that um information. And it was interesting to me when we were going through the results that about forty-seven percent of people uh who uh identify Ames, identify it through billboards, right? So out-of-home is actually still very critical and important. Um and this is just to show you the 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 depth and breadth of things that we are continuing to engage in in this realm. Everything from bus wraps, uh billboards, bus stops, we're we're getting, you know, close to fifty million impressions out of home. Out-of-home advertising is your outdoor advertising. Three hundred and thirty-eight impressions when you're looking at movie theaters, and we still have a strong present uh presence in print advertising, looking at a couple hundred thousand impressions there. So we're still maintaining um our more traditional advertising alongside our online and digital advertising. Um you know, where are we going on uh especially with marketing and communications? Uh well, we're about to engage in a strategic plan, which I know Dr. B is about to talk about in a second. Um and and that's exciting work for us. What I what we're showing here on the right side of this is is what we would call a student funnel. That's just the student journey. And that's everything from awareness, you know, seeing a billboard all the way down to graduation. And and really, Strategy One, we engaged with Acro, and I'm not, Larry would do a good job of knowing that acronym. I'm not gonna try to butcher that here. But a company, Acro, came in and helped us with our Strategic Enrollment Management Plan um to really start laying out that journey, and then that is now incorporated as the Strategic Plan Strategy One. That's our Strategic Enrollment Management Plan. Um really, what we're looking is is all of the opportunities we have to make that experience very consistent for prospective students as they matriculate through that funnel. So when they are are seeing a billboard, getting on the website, clicking a Request for Information form, talking to a recruiter, then talking to an advisor, we want that experience to be very consistent, and I'm very excited about the work um that SACE and MarCom have been doing together over the last couple of months to make sure that we're strategically planning this in the future. So that's the work uh Marketing and Communications will be engaged in um for the next three years. Um Communications, social media, uh that's one of the other ones that pings on our brand audit. Um most students are actually finding initial information uh about Ames via social media channels in the web, right? So we have a a an emphasis on our social media channels. You'll see here, um audience growth is is one of our our primary metrics. We want to continue to grow those audiences so that people uh you know, can find them and be engaged in them and see the content. And you'll also see at the bottom, especially on Facebook and Instagram, a significant increase in engagements, which tells us uh that we're honing on the on the correct content that people want to see, that they're engaging with and 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 finding valuable to them as their as their fans of these pages. Um we're also on X. You'll see some negative growth there. X has been going through uh quite a transition, which we've all seen in the news, so we're trying to keep up with that. Uh and that's expected, that you're gonna lose some audience and engagement as that channel continues to evolve. Uh new TikTok channel was launched in the last year. Um some good audience growth there, and we maintain our presence in LinkedIn. Um Communications, these are just a couple of examples of our top social posts. You'll see Ames Day was uh the best one and had almost three thousand engagements. Um you're looking at uh financial aid awareness, student life. We're just trying to show you here the depth and breadth of uh of things that people, you know, are receiving when they're on these channels and 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 the and the types of content that they're able to engage with. It really spans uh the gamut. Media, you know, we do work with our media, um and that's a point of emphasis for for this communications team. Uh over the last year, we've had nine hundred and two media mentions. That is up three hundred and seventy media mentions uh year-over-year. We did have a pretty big thing happen, which is why you see that that bottom one of without without Alquist, right? With the Alquist, uh that that got us a lot of national press, and so that that kind of upped our our um our overall media mentions there. Um even without Alquist, still at five thirty-eight, which is about a hundred more than we had previous uh the previous year. And we're able to really pitch um stories to them. This has been uh not a new thing on the team, but an increased area of emphasis where we're not just reacting uh to the things that they're asking us, but we're going out and saying, hey, we have a really cool story here um that we think you should cover. Um forty-seven stories pitched, uh you know, total. And then here's just a couple of examples of a few of the ones that were picked up, right? Women in Aviation was picked up by the Loveland Reporter Herald. Uh CBL Simulator was picked up by the Carrier Journal. Just some really cool stories um that show the breadth and depth of what Ames is doing out um in our communities reflected in the news coverage. Um we also run uh VIP Newsletter. This is a brand-new initiative over the last year. Um this is really uh community leaders and partners, legislators, journalists. We're uh we're we're on behalf of Dr. B sending this VIP newsletter out that's just showcasing critical critical things that are going on at Ames as a way to continue to keep that audience engaged. Um fifty-three percent open rate. The uh education industry norm for emails is thirty-six percent. And so that tells you that that group is interested in what Ames has to say, and they're actually opening up that content and reading it, um which tells us that we're on the right track and need to continue to make that VIP newsletter very important and interesting for them so that they can can continue to be updated. Community Relations, uh Ames Day, pretty cool event. Uh Communications worked on this. This was a cool thing that we did uh for Ames Day, bringing uh about two hundred uh leaders in the community here and presenting. I appreciate all of you all's involvement in that. Uh really, when we look at this whole slide, it's just unique ways for us to step out in front of the community and make our story story known, especially to community leaders. Uh each of you attended a proclamation. That was another really cool thing that was just done uh where we were able to go in front of county commissioners and city councils and have uh April designated as or May designated as uh National um Community College Month. Thank you, Dr. B, for letting me lip read. Uh and so it was a cool opportunity to sit in front of those audiences, key uh partners for us and and have them acknowledge Ames and and get to read those proclamations. Um also, a guest column in the Greeley Tribune uh uh for Dr. B here was just around last month, which was exciting. And we'll continue um to look for those opportunities and and engage in in those meaningful ways that allow us to really tell the story to our our community and our partners. Um T with Dr. B, hundred, I'm not gonna spend too much time on this. This is actually the second uh in most important internal communication we have. Uh T with Dr. B Monthly, uh the the one you all just did was awesome. A hundred and eighty-eight average views, about fourteen minutes of average average view time, which is awesome, considering how long our attention spans are nowadays. Uh and about sixty-five percent average completion rate. So T with Dr. B um continues to be a a primary driver. Um same in in the internal communications world uh is the daily. Um the daily and then the weekly is a student communication that the communications team helps um produce. But combined the daily and weekly, had two thousand articles submitted, edited and ran uh last year. So it's a significant amount of content. Spoiler alert, we're seeking to trim that back a little bit uh for all of the guys. A lot of content. Uh but the daily, fifty-nine percent average open rate, weekly sitting at twenty-three percent. Um twenty-five percent i- is the is the norm for those types of communications, right? So so we're sitting, the daily, we did a survey as the number one way that employees find their information. Uh so so we're really making a lot of progress on continuing to make that communication a good communication that people want to read and 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 trim it up content, making sure it's efficient. Looking ahead, uh you know, using the CRM, CRM is a big thing for us um as uh Element Four Five One has recently been selected. Now we can use the CRM and some other tools to continue to personalize content, looking at multimedia, uh both multimedia content in our channels of communication, but also presenting multimedia content to our our media partners so that they have multiple ways to pull information. Um so the comps team continues to be busy. Uh 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 Events. Hundred and fifty-one internal events, fifty-four more than last year, and sixty-five external events, twenty-two more than last year. The Events Team continues um to really knock this this out of the park, especially here at the Welcome Center. Um we've expanded capacities, after-hours availability. We've entered into that final phase. Uh we're we're doing multi-day events. We're at full capacity of the building. And then we also secured a liquor license in February um to to have, you know, that that opportunity for people um to just have better events here um with that secured. Um the Events Team also recalibrated EMS. This is not the most exciting slide, but it matters for the next one. Um EMS is our internal uh room reservation system, and they went through a pretty extensive revamp of that. That system was initially built um with an with old events, right? And as we built this building and built the Events Team, what you start to see is a need um for a better system and and really that starts to play out. Um all other spaces, all campuses, something we don't talk about too much, but the Events Team supports those events, too, for all of the spaces across the college. Um they supported two hundred and twenty-two events, which is a hundred and thirty-nine more than last year. A large part of that is because of the EMS system revamp. Now people are using the system. It's more user-friendly, and we're starting to actually catalog and support the events that are happening across all four campuses. Uh they worked on this. This is a new setup diagram. If you're if you're set, if you're booking an event, you can now uh actually look at the room setup and have multiple options, which streamlines this not only for the Events Team, but for one of our critical partners, which is facilities, um and being able to make that entire process a lot more efficient um so that we know exactly, uh people booking the rooms can can specifically uh select what they want. And then the teams know upfront and can set that up without a lot of back and forth. Uh we've also implemented client surveys. Uh this is a pretty new one um to where when we host external events here at Ames, especially in the Welcome Center, all of those clients get an external survey so we can continue to make this process better um as we mature into this building. Um overwhelmingly uh positive responses from our our surveys uh with the Welcome Center. We're we're headed toward the end. Uh major milestones. Charlie Barron's, our first ticketed event um at Ames Community College. That was a sellout, uh which it was it was pretty cool to see. It was a lot of effort from the Events Team to do the first ticketed event. And as you can see there, uh I have a full house right there, you know, just shy of sixteen hundred people buying tickets. And we had about fourteen hundred um day out, which is is normal for industry. Um we learned a couple of things from this event. Um one, people like to select seats. They don't like general admission. Uh and so we had general admission, uh and that caused us two kind of downstream issues. Uh one was the entrance lines. Everybody showed up pretty early so they could get that seat, you know, that they wanted. Um our entrance lines were a little backed up. And then two concession lines, that really means beer lines, were a little long. Uh and uh when you walked in, it was kind of, it was a little surprising. You're like, wow, that's a that's a really long line. Um so we learned those things. Um and and really, it's a it's a it's a testament to this team in that, um is that graphic? Look at this cool graphic. Hunter did this for me, right? Uh really, what you see here is rapidly before our next event, which right here is uh Dude Dad, another comedian who's coming June twenty-first, they within about two weeks after that event had selected a new ticketing system and began the implementation process and implemented it rapidly. And you kind of, you see that happening right here, where people can actually now select their their individual seat um and and sit where they want, which solves a couple downstream problems for us, right? Uh shorter lines up front, and our concessions should be cleared up. We're also gonna have more people at the concession line. So so I again, this Events Team is is amazing. And how quick they 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 were able to get Charlie Barron's here, and then how quick they were able to learn, adapt, and put something brand new in place um is significant. And the Web Team helped them um with that, too. Three hundred and thirty-two tickets sold to Dude Dad. We're we're going to kind of take what we learned and see how it goes here. He's a local guy. He's up in Fort Collins. That number is actually five hundred and ninety as of right before me walking over here. Um so I believe we'll be tracking toward a sellout on this event as well, where we'll see how this system works. And then we can continue to expand um our ticketed event offerings. And with that, hopefully, that was efficient enough. I appreciate your time, and I stand for questions.
That was great, Zach. Questions, comments? No, it's all exciting, and I I think um it's really nice when you are online or um I think even driving and just that awareness that Ames is here and um the great work that everybody does. So thank you.
I just wanted to comment uh that I remember three, four years ago, and we were talking about, but we need to get our message out better and so forth. And to look at what is being done now versus four, five years ago is just tremendous progress. Congratulations.
I just want to say, just a wonderful presentation, and you've come a long way, and your whole team has done a great job. And I've been um to a couple of different conferences here for with my business and totally separate than what education does. And they are thrilled. They said they will book for the rest of their lives. So everyone is doing a really nice job.
Yeah, we keep seeing more and more repeat customers, which kind of tells a story in and of itself. A- and I was remiss. I do want to thank my team. This team is an honor to work with and and spectacular, um very motivated, um and very proud of their work, and and it shows, I think, in what they do.
Well done, MarCom.
Thank you very much.
So the next part is also very exciting. Um I'm wanted to uh chat with you a little bit about our twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven strategic and tactical plan. Woo-hoo! It actually is gonna officially start on July first, even though um many divisions and departments have already started. Uh you have the entire tactical plan in your packet. I'm not gonna go through it all. Uh we actually had a strategic plan retreat, and we did go through it all. Uh and it took us four hours, which was great. It was an opportunity for um as Terry mentioned, um many of the administrators, mostly college council, also with faculty representation, staff representation, student representation, to kind of go through it, learn from each other what the focal points um and initiatives are going to be in over the next three years. So you can take a deep breath. We're not gonna do that kind of deep dive, but I do want to point out some highlights for you. So basically, this plan, very high level, is going to do three things. Ultimately, it's gonna make it easier for students to find and get to Ames. And when they get here, they're gonna have a fabulous and great experience. And we're going to continue to make this college a fantastic place to work. Those are the three things, high level, that we're gonna continue doing. I also want to know, want you to know that as we talk about this, it's um the Board approved this last year as a planning and celebration year and wanted to thank you for allowing us to do that because last five-year plan was very aggressive, had a lot of tactics and initiatives, and we really did need that time to recognize the incredible work that's been done, institutionalize that work, and then begin the discussions and planning and evaluation of the data that we collected over this eighteen months to then craft this. So it gave us time to take a deep breath and also start to think ahead. So I just want to take a moment to give a little bit of history, kind of a quick review, and you have this in your in your portals, um the Gantt chart and the template. So we started in January twenty twenty-three, and actually, you as the Board started this whole process. So if you're looking at the Gantt chart, the list on the left-hand side were all the steps that the college took from January twenty twenty-three till basically last week and today. And we moved through all that. That includes, starting with the Board, and you recall that you had a retreat in January where you set a new purpose, vision, mission and values for the college. The college, this was before you arrived. Um the college then took those uh what we call mission docs and put the, you know, took those to heart. We moved through spring semester twenty twenty-three. The Cabinet did a listening tour throughout the entire college. We had Conversation Day. Some of you were there at Conversation Day with Dr. Arthur Levine, who's uh nationally globally known, really, as um a pillar in higher education research, and he really shared with us and did some work with us throughout the day on the future of higher ed and where we really need to be focused. And so we took those ideas and thoughts and his book to heart. We then spent a good part of the spring and summer collecting all that information. We have two hundred pages of single-spaced ideas and thoughts that we boiled down and used what we're calling as ruthless prioritization to the document you have before you today to really focus on what is gonna move the needle and have the biggest impact for our students, our employees, our college and our community. So you might recall, those of you uh who were here in August, uh you acted on two strategy statements that we crafted together. Once those strategy statements were approved, then the college took that direction, and we moved forward with objective statements. And then now today, you have all those tactics and initiatives that we're going to be taking a look at. So I'm just kind of looking at my notes to make sure I don't forget anything. You heard Zach talk So I'm just kind of looking at my notes to make sure I don't forget anything. You heard Zach talk about strategy one, which is, um, as he referred to it as our strategic enrollment management plan. And for quite, quite intensely, you know, for all intents and purposes, that's what strategy one is. However, what's really exciting, there's several really exciting things about this plan. Um, that are different from our last plan. Our last strategic plan, we had a lot of initiatives that we needed to do to make the foundation of this institution stronger. So that we can have that as a jumping off point. So in many cases, that plan had a lot of individual division kind of exercises. This plan is extremely collaborative. There are a lot, in fact, most of the initiatives are collaborations between divisions, between Markham and student engagement, between student engagement, academic affairs, between academic affairs and student engagement, between, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We keep moving forward. So it's a very collaborative effort. So when we say strategy one is our strategic, is strategic enrollment management plan. The whole plan really is strategy one laser focuses us on recruiting enrollment, retention to completion of our students and what that means. So that's laser focused. So one example that might be an odd example, but I'm just, I'm kind of practicing and starting to use this as I'm learning this new strategic plan. Um, you all approved a very exciting building project, which is the Student, uh, Health and Wellness Center. Very exciting. We see that as a recruitment tool and as a retention tool. And some folks say, well, I wonder, how can a building be a recruitment tool? How can a recruit, you know, building be a retention tools? But when you think about, um, all the folks that are considering and thinking about Ames and what they're looking for in their educational experience and what they need to be a successful learner. That is mental health, physical health, and I would venture to say, um, spiritual health and whatever that means to an individual. So as one example, there are many examples in there. I'm not going to go through everything, but that's one example that, um, I think folks just don't think about very often, but it will have a lot of impact in that. As we mentioned before, preparing for the future with Dr. Arthur Levine at Conversation Day, you will see in Strategy Two, particularly Objectives One and Two. Transforming and creating new curriculum and transforming and creating instructional delivery methods. Um, Ames is outstanding with not only its faculty, but also its vision of what is coming. And how to ensure that we are presenting to our learners what they need to know today and for the future. So you will find in Strategy Two, Objectives One and Two, you'll find competency-based education. You'll see words like micro credentials, badging, varying delivery methods and modes. You'll see words like emerging technologies, which I'm learning about now, beyond AI and VR. There are things called AR. There are things called XR. And believe it or not, if you're a futurist, you probably know this, holograms are right around the corner. Yeah, oh, and that's very exciting. And what does that mean for us? What does that mean for our instruction? What does that mean for our facilities? What does that mean for our work? How can we be a beacon perhaps for our Northern Colorado community and be a think tank? How can we attract folks to Ames to experience some of these things? So, well, I'll use another building project as an example. Talked about AWIC, right? The Ames Workforce Innovation Center. And I'm sorry I keep using buildings, but they're popping in my head. One of the, um, hopeful design features that we're looking for in AWIC is to have a training space that is powered appropriately to be our holodeck. And how can we perhaps be the first in Northern Colorado to be able to train folks and businesses and industry on how to use holograms? When we think about building the AWIC building, what kinds of materials are we going to be using to build that building? You may have heard of phase change materials. A lot of that you're hearing in outdoor clothing that sort of intuitively reads your body temperature and then either, um, heats you up or cools you down based on what your body is. You may have heard that. Well, they're now doing that in ceiling tiles where ceiling tiles intuitively read the room temperature. And then will cool down or warm up the room based on the preset average or whatnot that needs to occur. So why don't we in a couple of rooms have that, that we can also use as a, um, a carrot, if you will, or a hook or a place where Northern Colorado can kind of come to Ames and say, and talk to Mike Millsaps and say, hey, I understand you're using this really cool phase change material. How is that working for you? Should we be considering that? So those are some of the things that we're looking at and that you'll see in, in this, in this plan under the, um, the tactics and initiatives. Finally, this plan also focuses on our employees. And I'd like to think about Strategy Two, Objective Three, similarly that we are looking at Strategy One. So Strategy One, we're focused on our students. We're recruiting students. We're enrolling students. We're retaining students to completion. Strategy Two, Objective Three, we're recruiting employees. We don't enroll them, but we do orient them and onboard them and we absolutely want to retain them. So what are some enhancements that we're looking at with regard to that? So in recruiting, creating more grounded, integrated experience, once you engage with Ames as a candidate right from the get-go. And how does that roll right into orientation and onboarding when you're hired? And then retention really focuses, uh, on choosing an engagement model. And a grow program for leadership and other professional development kinds of activities, which Ames already does an outstanding job with regard to professional development. When we look at industry standard, Ames is above and beyond. I could go on and on. I'm not going to. This is exciting all around. We are thrilled. Like I said, folks aren't waiting till July first. They've already started. I couldn't be prouder of our college for the time, energy, effort, forethought, creativity that they have put in this plan. And it has been eighteen months of thought, conversation, whiteboards, sticky notes, erasing it, rewriting it, putting it back together. So truly thank you. So the action is basically read it. Obviously, if you have any questions, please ask, uh, just so that you know, um, the accountability steps. Uh, what we have done with the last plan, we will continue to do with this plan. So at your August board meeting, uh, various folks who are sitting behind me at the table will come up and briefly present to you, these are the initiatives that we will be focused on this coming year. So for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, they'll just give you a couple of examples. In December, they'll come up again and say, this is how we've moved through progress for the year. So a six-month check-in. And then in May or June, so for those of you who've been part of this process, usually June, when we meet as a board for your retreat, that's when I bring, um, data about completion of the first, second or third year of the plan. So that will be how you as a board monitor our movement. That's also how we are accountable to the community because all of this is reported out in our annual report out to the community. And that's how we are also accountable to one another. So therein lies our next three-year strategic plan. Any question?
Any questions or comments?
It, it represents a lot of work, a lot of discussion and looks great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so very much. Obviously more to come for the next three years. So there's, there is something that's not on your agenda and it was intentionally not put on your agenda because it is a surprise. It's a surprise not only for you, but for the entire institution because today is the day that we can announce it. So I'd like to ask Dee Schultz to come on up to the podium. And if we can have many, many drum rolls, that would be fantastic.
That was a long drum roll. Thank you. Well, I think everyone thought I was done this year and so did I, but here I am. Uh, so I'm excited to be up here and to announce that as of today, the Denver Post has, uh, that Ames has been selected as a top workplace in Colorado for twenty twenty-four. So this award is given to the top one hundred and fifty workplaces across Colorado each year. The selection process is determined based on the results of an employee engagement survey conducted by InnerGage utilizing a platform for the past seventeen years to identify the key drivers for success. This survey is designed to focus on various themes such as for employees, uh, they're unable to grow, feel valued, respected and supported, empowered and feel engaged. Ames employees participated in the employee engagement survey this past January. And the results of the survey will be shared with the college next week. This is the fifth award Ames has received based on the past surveys that we participated in. We received the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one top workplace. And Ames also received a top USA workplace designation in twenty twenty-two based on the twenty-one survey results. Therefore, congratulations goes to the board and all the employees for making Ames a top workplace. Congratulations.
So we have, um, we have folks throughout the college that, um, wear their, uh, badges on lanyards and so they collect their service pins. And we usually have when we, yes, Heidi knows it. We have top, top workplace pins. So we do have pins. And if you are interested, it doesn't say Ames on them, but if you would like one, you can have one. And, um, as of later today, it's going to be announced, um, statewide. So we're a few hours early, but it will be in the Denver Post and there'll be a celebration and so forth. So it's awesome. So last, uh, of the president's report, recognition of new employees. So if there are any, um, yes, okay, good. If there are any supervisors in the audience that want to bring their new folks up, please go ahead and line up up here by the, um, by the flags. That would be awesome. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I would like to introduce Ally Lemo. You'll see her in the directory as Alyssa, but she goes by Ally, A-L-Y. And she is the new staff executive for Lovren Campus and Continuing Education.
Chair Shock, Dr. B, trustees, colleagues, I'm really excited to introduce you all. I'll slow down. To Erin Fink, our new executive director of Corporate Solutions. Erin brings over twenty years, uh, working in Northern Colorado in this industry. She is the most prolific writer of Colorado Burst and existing industry grants in the state. Um, and she grew up here in Greeley. So this is a welcome home for Erin as much as a welcome to being in our, so welcome here.
Welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone, and thank you. Anyone else? New employees? Chair Shock, that concludes the president's report for May of twenty twenty-four.
Fantastic. Thank you. That's some exciting information. Next, we have reflections, comments and accolades from the board members about Ames. Anybody have anything they'd like to bring forward?
Oh, yeah, I have something and it relates to your comment about the buildings. Um, so very anecdotally, and, and I wasn't going to share this, but, um, you mentioned that. So my brother from Montana happened to be here for some time. And so we did just a driving tour, you know, of Ames and and also the over in Windsor, the campus. So this campus and the Windsor. And then, um, I had friends that we had dinner with, um, just last week. And they had friends that they hadn't connected with from Oregon and they said they were only here two days. But one of the things they did was they were, they showed them Ames, um, and drove around. And, you know, I heard my brother later bragging on Ames to another family member. So, so I think it's true. I think that, you know, uh, the building, I mean, seeing this campus is just phenomenal. And it just strikes me that there was a time I know in specifically Greeley where we were concerned about people that were working here but not choosing to live here. Um, and, you know, certainly our school district has done a phenomenal job. And that's one of the reasons people will choose to live in a community. Ames campus, it should be a reason that someone chooses to live not only in Greeley, but in Will County. Um, cause it's phenomenal. So, um, so that's one comment. And then again, just being overwhelmed with the leadership. I mean, the word, I kind of, I'm a writer and so I'm writing down as I'm listening to everything, words that come to mind and, and it's leadership at every level. Um, at every level. And the other is that it's so obvious that there's such an opportunity for the voices of people on campus to be heard and to be engaged and be a part of things. And so I think that's why not only do we have this wonderful campus and campuses really, but we also have, um, that's why we're the best place to work in all of Colorado. So, uh, and that certainly goes to everybody that's in this room and beyond. So congratulations to everyone and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Trustee Hayley?
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Dee Schultz for a lot of things. Uh, last, after our last meeting, uh, Dr. Bornstein arranged so that I could meet with Dee and talk about the different salary schedules. And I greatly appreciate Dee's, um, time and expertise in, in allowing a simpleton like me to understand what was occurring. So thank you very much. Um, I happen to be returning from a, uh, of St. Louis on Saturday night and I was, you know, I'm not a talker at all. And you're supposed, there we go. I'm glad there was some laughter in the organization. Um, and I was taking the bus back to my vehicle and I was carrying a conversation with this family. And this, this woman was just staring at me and I'm like, uh-oh, what did I do this time? And so she introduced, she looked at me and she said, do you do anything with Ames? And I said, well, yeah, kinda. I said, I'm a trustee. She said, I knew it. And so it was Miranda McFarlane and she, she said, I love Ames and I love the things that happen there. And, and I said, I really do too. And, and she said, we're glad that you're here. So I like that. And then, um, last Saturday, uh, or Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, Lou Cartier had another Ed Op piece. And, you know, uh, the, the Tribune is not what it once was, but that's something that I always look for when Lou puts something in the paper. Uh, he should be very proud of what he shares and how he represents Ames in himself. And he talked about your first dirty job as a young person and it was very well done. And I always appreciate when he's in the newspaper. He does a great job.
Trustee Wendell.
I don't have great stories like this, but this is important. I'm, I'm just, it's such a pleasure to see Ames, um, take such like a high honor, um, to give awards to the faculty and staff. I think that's really important. And then I know to grant these two, um, faculty members emeritus status is really important. My father-in-law had that and he, I mean, he held that close to his heart. So thank you for honoring that. I think it's really important. And then hats off, um, to all the members, staff, the faculty and Jared. Um, thank you for everything you've done. It's really worked well and excited to see the continuous next group come in. So thank you.
Trustee O'Air.
I, I would just make a very brief comment to say how pleased I am as a board member to, uh, think about the, the great education that people get here at an incredible price. And then to hear from our staff members that it's the best place to work in Colorado. But that completes the picture. That, that is, uh, very impressive.
Thank you. I, um, I too have a couple of comments to make. I, we hear about the excellence, that leadership piece and all the different pieces that come with the organization and it comes down to, um, every individual in the organization. And so one of the
And so one of the things that I find so innovative is the faculty consultation agreement, I think, committee. And the work that goes on there and keeping the open dialogue and really about how to work together. And so Chuck and Brooke, thank you for that presentation today. Jennifer York, the student, holy smokes. I am blown away every time somebody gets up there, but today was just that over the top. Tracy Warner in imaging radiology. What a career. And I will tell you, coming from that field, what a difference that program makes and she has made. And so just a couple of comments there. And then Jared and Ross, I just want to call you guys out again. The great representation you guys have done. And again, that big thank you. So. Any other pieces? Any other wisdom? Hey, if not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Thanks, Jane. Thanks, Heidi. All those in favor say aye. Aye.